Welcome. This here public testimony on non-agenda items. Testimony on non-agenda items is limited to thirty minutes at the beginning of the meeting with a maximum of fifteen minutes per topic. Public testimony speakers are limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker depending upon the total number of speaker requests received by the board. We have received nine requests, so it would be thirty minutes, roughly three minutes, three minutes apiece. Please remember that no deferral of time is allowed and the board asks that speakers focus their comments on the issues and not on individuals. When you begin speaking, the green light will come on, a yellow light when you have one minute left, and when your time is up, the red light will appear and a bell will ring. Please finish your sentence when your time is up. Our first speaker Reverend Sharon Shane Harris, we have Tamara Mohammed, Desiree Smith, Francine Maxwell, Mark Hines, Citizen Cindy Burrows, Arlen Belfer, Belfer?
Erin.
Erin, thank you. And Dr. Andre J. Branch, Kim Maire. And we'll start with Reverend Shane Harris. Reverend Harris, thank you.
Thank you. And good evening to you all. The superintendent and all of the board members, thank you for your work. I want to begin this evening by saying that this past week, on Friday, the twenty-sixth, we suffered a great challenge as we watched our community crumble, as we watched our young people go into disarray at Lincoln High School. But I could say today that what was last Friday is not today. And what was breaking out last Friday is not the case today. And today we're celebrating because of what happened yesterday, both at Lincoln and as we conducted important meetings that bridged the gap between the district and the community. Our community came together and united behind our young men and women, and we should all be proud of the way that they have fought through to come to a census of collaboration. Today, the challenges that were faced last week when a fight broke out, when disarray broke out, today, there is peace and conversation, cohesive conversation, that is creating collaboration to get us to all the place where we're trying to get. Today, I'm proud to say that we have a superintendent who took immediate action when she saw a declining situation. And we have a number of community members and leaders who stood up when she called for them. So today, I just wanted to bring a sense of peace to the conversation. And I wanted to remind us that even though that fight broke out last week, even though the challenges took place, that we have fought through as a community to come together and to collaborate on greater levels. Because at the end of the day, every child should be in school. Every child should have a fair opportunity. I think that I will leave this with you. My concern today is that we still have a young man, who Jesse, who is in juvenile hall as we speak. And thankful to the superintendent for her stance, to stand in rooms and say that we want this kid back in school. In spite of what she's had to face, I'm proud to say today that we are going to continue to stay diligent as a community, to see this young man back in school, to remind the community that one situation does not make a school, nor doesn't make the rest of these young people. So today, we must be reminded that one incident does not define the rest of the masses. Lincoln is a great school. It produces great students, three-point-oh students, students that are doing great things, going to colleges all over this nation. And those students should not be looked at as bad kids, but those students should be looked at as honorable kids that are on their way to make a great future and to change this nation. Thank you.
Thank you Reverend Harris. Tamara, then Desiree.
Yes, sir. Hello. Thank you for taking a moment to hear our words. I want to applaud you all for setting aside the time for the children in the community to come together and birth what was on their soul and on their mind yesterday. I sat in a room with our Lincoln students, and I call them "our" Lincoln students because that's my community. That's my school. I'm an alumni of Lincoln High School. My children are alumni of Lincoln High School. And I watched our future in that room yesterday, holding themselves accountable and pleading, if not begging, for the adults in their world to step up, guide them, and help them. One of their main concerns yesterday, of all the schools in San Diego Unified, they walk into their school every day to see a police car, front and center. In the area of which they live, they are stressed beyond belief. They grew up not viewing the police officers as peaceful, but as adversaries. So when they walk into an area that's supposed to be a safe place for them, and the first thing they see is the police car in the middle of the quad, that's a huge sign that says, "I'm in charge." That's a sign that says, "Welcome to your pipeline." That pipeline, you know I'm talking about? Where they're going from preschool to prison? If you walk around Lincoln High School and then go walk around Donovan, go walk around all of those prisons in O'Teague, they look the same. Our children aren't experiencing a safe environment for their education. These young people are at a breaking point. There were children yesterday who said, "You know what? I can't take it anymore. I come to school to learn. I come to school to see my friends. I come to school to be cared for by the adults." They don't feel that when they're walking on that campus. The community doesn't feel that. I sat in a meeting where other principals for schools that feed into Lincoln said the number-one reason children do not go to Lincoln, they don't feel safe. How do you not feel safe coming from Johnson Elementary? You don't even know Lincoln yet, but they don't feel safe. What are we going to do as a district, as a community, to change that paradigm? Because something has to be done. The media's portraying our children as animals. I'm on that campus every single week. They're not animals. They are intelligent. They are beautiful. They are geniuses waiting to be told what to do to birth their genius. My daughter, biology pre-med, UCLA, Lincoln, class of two thousand and fifteen.
Reverend Tamara Mohammed. Desiree Smith. Desiree Smith, followed by Francine Maxwell and Mark Hines.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I stand before you as a parent and someone that has a personal interest in the success of the children. I come to address the zero tolerance pipeline, which is pushing our children into prison, as the young lady before me just stated before you. Too much, far too often, children from minor mistakes are being expelled and suspended and arrested. Children make mistakes, and they learn from them, as do adults. And I don't see where children have to be accountable for zero tolerance where adults do not. I also want to speak to the fact that I had an encounter with this officer. I was in the office returning my son from a doctor's office, and I tried to have a conversation with him. He was very rude and did not even want to speak to me. I asked him, "What was the purpose for him being so heavily armed on campus with children?" He replied that that was what he was issued, but he wasn't issued a camera. This was in December. Shortly thereafter, now we have this incident where this young child has been pepper sprayed and tased and humiliated, taken away from his family. His father wasn't able to check on him when he went to the hospital to see. Too many children are being hurt. My son was choked, slammed to the ground. Nothing happened. It's time for these officers that are using the excessive force to be held accountable. Today, I held myself accountable, and I went to Lincoln and I volunteered to be a parent, volunteer. I have an appointment on the fourteenth to come here to be fingerprinted. And hopefully, after this fingerprinting, as a parent, I don't know why I have to be fingerprinted, but I intend to be at that school every day possible, just to be a presence that's positive. Because right now, they don't have a positive presence when they have to walk on the campus and see this police officer, when they have to be subjected to an armed police officer with children. As a parent, when my child goes to school, I expect him to return home in the same manner that he left. This is not happening, and there needs to be a change. I'm from the community. My mother and father graduated from Lincoln. My son was an honor student prior to being transferred. Within weeks later, he was failing, and he just wanted to go because he wanted to play pat, he wanted to play football because the rest of my family were alumnis there. Now he has lost the joy for education. This is not right. There needs to be a change immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Desiree Smith.
Professor McCorry, if I interrupt for just one second? I just noticed that there's a picture, and people may not know what that is, of a circle and this is Reverend Shane Harris was talking about the change on Monday at Lincoln High School, and this is a circle of the students in a big circle uniting at the beginning of the day for peace and justice at Lincoln High School.
Thank you. Thank you. Question.
They open their morning with a day of prayer.
The comment from the audience was that they opened their morning with a day of prayer. Francine Maxwell, followed by Mark Hines.
Francine Maxwell, A.S. Hilliard said, "I have never encountered any children in any group who are not geniuses. There is no mystery on how to teach them. The first thing you do is to treat them like human beings, and the second thing you do is to love them." This district has the blueprint that has not been implemented nor funded yet. So I call to you to have a conversation on implementing and funding the blueprint. There's a piece in the blueprint that says that the district will establish a network of parent centers that will provide wraparound services for all students in need. I listened yesterday to four compelling students that told me about the trauma that they've been suffering since two thousand and fourteen, when they saw a young man get choked hold and slammed to the ground. They wake up in the middle of the night, their appetite has not been right since two thousand and fourteen. There is no wraparound services for them. Their families cannot afford to pay for counseling, so given the blueprint, if it was implemented and funded, we would have had some services that those family members could come to Lincoln High School and get some counseling services that could help these children and their families progress. Cindy, I really missed you yesterday, coming on the campus just for a quick moment, as busy as your schedule is, to show the staff some support. There are some issues when a staff person sends an email to a trustee, when an administrator asks them to stand by their door and welcome the children and make them feel safe. I know that their contract doesn't call for them to stand at the door, but it is very telling for that staff member to send Mr. Beiser an email that an administrator asked if all staff can stand by their door and welcome the children into classrooms and make, and if you got to give a side hug, I call it a church hug, give it to them. There's some trauma. There's no trauma-informed care that I can find that our staff has been trained on. There's some sensitivity training that needs to occur, and the blueprint calls out for that. So what I'm asking is that the trustees put on your agenda, have a conversation about funding the blueprint. And you put Dr. Moore to work, because he can roll up his sleeves. He has proven that, because it seems like what I'm finding is everything is dropping into Dr. Moore's lap. So what's one more thing to put in his basket? Like I said, the administration, the staff, they had their trustee there, which was wonderful. She made a connection with the children immediately, and she let them know what she's about and what she's there for. But Cindy, I'm going to say it again, I find it just a little bit troubling that I didn't see you, because Tuesday, Monday, rather, when I showed up, everybody climbed out of the trees that have been sitting in the trees, quiet, because Lincoln's been going through stuff. So I just want to have you consider funding the blueprint and putting it back on your agenda.
Thank you Francine Maxwell. Mark Hines, followed by Citizen.
I want to thank all the people that came on the Lincoln topic. I did not realize when I scheduled myself that this would be the topic, and I apologize to take you away from it. The last time I was before the board was in nineteen ninety-six, when you honored me as the city teacher of the year and then later county teacher of the year, and I haven't had anything to say to you since then, but I wanted to come tonight to thank you. I work at Maryland's Middle School as the history chair, and you allowed us to become a Google Pilot School. And since then, we've used Google Apps for education, and it has turned, well, the school is already doing well, but it has done wonders for us. I can have students now collaborate across the campus on the same document at the same time, wrote questions that used to be a standard answer, for example, who was the most influential pharaoh of the Old Kingdom? The book would give you a standard answer, the fourteen-year-old book, maybe Ramses the Second, and then now the students have many sources, and they get in an argument. Well, my source says it was the female pharaoh who worked on infrastructure, and well, my source says it was this pharaoh who was an explorer and expanded the nation. So now we have even rote questions being discussed at a very high level. I had a student tell me, "I'm sorry, I can't do the homework. I'm going on the Disney Cruise." And I said, "Well, you know, they have Internet on the Disney Cruise." And at the same time, we were typing on a document, we could see that child, who was very fortunate, of course, typing on the document at the same time. That's really unheard of in the past. Illnesses are no excuse anymore. We have students who type from their bedroom at the same time we're typing and keep up with work. So we have work turned in completely electronically. I can't remember the last time I went to the copy room. So we've saved a lot of paper, helped the environment, and things are saved forever because it's a virtual world now. I know that I use the oldest computers in the district. They're called Year Two. They'll be replaced shortly, but if you can do it with those, imagine what you can do with the new ones that we will be getting, the Google Chromebooks. So I just wanted to thank you for allowing us to try this, and I know it'll spread probably like a wildfire, but it has, it's really been wonderful. I think, I know some of our students came and presented a little bit of a presentation to you about six weeks ago, and things have gone on since then. And once a teacher tries this kind of thing, I think they, they never want to go back to the old pencil and paper routine. So thank you to the board for supporting us in that endeavor. And thank you for taking time to listen to me. I know there's a very important topic here, and I appreciate all your support for the kids at Lincoln. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Citizen, followed by Cindy Burrows.
The Lincoln High School incident is directly a result of poor decisions by Superintendent Cindy Martin. Under the previous administration, there was no full-time officer assigned to Lincoln. A strong, competent, caring principal supervised an orderly, calm campus, and scores were going up. So Martin fires her. Martin appoints an inexperienced vice principal who left Lincoln because he didn't want to be there, but she brought him back. She allowed him to ban the Border Patrol. Border Patrol was banned from the career fair because insubordinate teachers opposed the Border Patrol, and they cited "student fear." So the message to students at Lincoln was, "Law enforcement is to be feared." So what did she expect to happen? Students were not supervised by administration. They've learned to be afraid of law enforcement instead of learning respect on the school campus. If Martin wants to be a true leader, she needs to investigate the Lincoln principal and why the students were not properly supervised. The school officer and his use of a taser on a student. How sad that two, four, maybe nine students are now going into the prison pipeline due to the mistakes of the adults that were supposed to protect them.
Thank you, Citizen. Cindy Burrows, followed by Erin Belfer.
Hello. My name is Cindy Burrows, and I am a current parent of a Lincoln High student. She is currently a senior at Lincoln High. I'm here to talk about, about the reasonings in the system, the system that's going on at Lincoln. One, there has yet to be a meeting with me. I'm an immediate impact to this school. My child attends. I have not met with the administration. I have not met with the board. I have not met with school police. I have not met with anyone. I have twin daughters. One was affected by the pepper spray, the mass spraying of the students. My child was not offered, nor sought out or given any type of treatment behind that. There were several children that were taken in ambulances to places. Parents were not notified. These are all systems and procedures that should be in place. About a year ago, I asked for a safety plan for the school. What is your plan when we had the active shooter and the bomb threat? What is your plan? I need to see it. Can you give me something? It's confidential. There's pieces that you can block out and provide. That, too, has not been provided. So again, we as parents are not being given the tools to help keep our kids in school, and the school and the board is not giving us the tools that we need to have either. I need a change. This has gone on far too long. My daughter is a senior. I'm at that school as often as I can be. I am a full-time working, single parent of two girls at Lincoln High School, who are in the top ten percent of that school, who will be attending Howard, Spelman, Clark Atlanta, UC Santa Barbara. These kids are performers. There are supports and programs for some that need it as well, but there is not a comprehensive safety plan or support for the children that are there. They're not safe. They don't feel safe. I arm my children with the ability to be safe. They call me immediately when something goes on. I have a village. This is my village. My village looks out because I'm not there every day. So we, as the board, I ask you, please, put a safety plan in place. Let us know what it is. Find out why these children are not, did not receive medical attention. And this officer, he shall not return to Lincoln. He should not, he shall not. I ask for his removal from that school and never to return. And I also ask that the students have a voice. The students have a voice, and who comes to their campus? They have to. They have to have a voice. They're the reason why everybody exists. So we need to give them their voice. And what I know about deadly force and non-lethal procedures, he had many choices, this cop. Many, many choices. He had a choice to walk away. He knew who the kid was, report him. He had a choice to pull out his, his open hand combat to the child. I don't know if they still carry Asp or not, but he had that choice also, before he moved to something that could have potentially led to a lethal harm to this child. He tased him. Again, let's put in some procedures to let us know what's going on safety-wise for our children. We don't have that. Thank you.
Cindy. Erin Belfer, followed by Dr. Andre J. Branch.
Hi. I'm Erin Belfer, and I'm here as a parent of a student at San Diego Unified School District, but I'm also here as the founding member of our local chapter of the national organization called Showing Up for Racial Justice. And we are an organization of concerned white people, calling in white people to do anti-racist work. I speak on behalf of our group and of myself, as my, of myself as a parent, that we're very disheartened to hear about what happened to the students at Lincoln High School on Friday. Mr. Harris opened the comments tonight by saying one incident does not define the school or the students. But the thing about what happened and the results of what happened with a child being incarcerated right now in detention, that is defining. And the trajectory of his life and the life of the other students who are purported to be arrested or charged with crimes, that changes the trajectory of their future. That changes their family's future. It changes the future of their community, and it changes the future of all of our lives because they are our future. And I look at the faces up here, those of you who are making decisions on behalf of all of our children, and they're predominantly white. We have the power here, and we have, our, our freedom is bound up with the freedom of the black students at Lincoln and their families. You know, the media reported that Jesse Duncan is a three-point-oh student and that he has no criminal record, and that's really great, but that shouldn't matter either. He's a child. If he had a one-point-eight GPA, if he had a criminal history, that doesn't matter. He's human. The little girl in South Carolina who was thrown to the floor by a police officer when she was sitting at her desk because she refused to turn off her phone was an indolent teenager like teenagers can be. We had no sympathy for her until we found out she was a foster child. You know, we shouldn't be looking to our children, to black children, to be something bigger and better than white children. There are not police officers with guns in my child's school. There are not police officers with guns in La Jolla High, or at Claremont High, or Rancho Bernardo. That is not happening there. These things don't happen there. And now we have Jesse, he's sitting in juvenile hall for how many days that he's missing school? He was injured physically by the tasing. He's been injured emotionally, psychologically. Can you imagine your child sitting and sleeping in juvenile detention for five days over something that could have been resolved peacefully and with calm heads? The KKK member who participated in a rally in Anaheim this past weekend and stabbed a counter protester with a flagpole, he's not in jail. But Jesse Duncan is sitting in juvenile hall. So I would like to urge this board to really think about how we want to be as a community because Jesse is our child, too. And I would urge this board to consider restorative justice for all of these students and work with the city council members and our leaders and the police department to make sure all charges are dropped, and these students work with the faculty and administration and police department and us for restorative justice and not punitive punishment. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin Belfer. Dr. Andre J. Branch, followed by Kim Maire. Is that right? So Dr. Andre J. Branch.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Dr. Branch. I am the president of the San Diego branch of the NAACP. I'm also a professor of, an associate professor of education at San Diego State University. I prepare teachers for public school teaching, and specifically in the area of curriculum development and multicultural education. We prepare teachers to do the very best jobs that they can do in our schools, teaching our children. Our expectation is that our children will be safe in our schools. And so I've come tonight because our children aren't safe. The NAACP has received reports that the officer who tased the student not once but twice the last week has tased other students. And so we are calling for the records for the past two years of every incident of tasing that that officer has been involved with. That is, every incident of tasing, we want numbers, not students' names. That is, every incident of tasing, we want numbers, not students' names. Every incident of tasing that that officer has been involved in, every time that he has deployed his taser. In addition to which, we would like the record of every arrest of a student that that officer has been involved with. Finally, we are calling for, and again, for the past two years. We are not asking for students' names. We are asking for the quantitative data. We also would like information about every incident of discipline to which this officer has been subjected. Our office is at 404 Euclid Avenue in San Diego, California. We'd like this information delivered at your earliest convenience. We would not like you to move slowly. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Branch. Kim, going to be our last speaker. Kim Maare, M-A-R-E, if I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Good afternoon. It's actually Kim Maare, and I stand before you today as a broken-hearted member of this community. Yesterday, I spent most of my day at Lincoln High School, and I was really empowered towards the end of the day when the students actually led a meeting in which they discussed their needs for their school and themselves. And one of the common themes that I heard that day was that their school was overpoliced. And anytime police are armed and on campus, there's always an opportunity to harm a student or another child. And those are our children. What happened to Jesse should never happen to anyone's child. He was tased. That is an act of violence. And multiple students were pepper sprayed indiscriminately. That is unacceptable, and that is something that we absolutely cannot stand for. There are a couple of things that I want to mention really quick before I take my seat. One of them is the ugly school-to-prison pipeline. And I'm not going to wax poetic today about the stats and how they apply to students of color, specifically black people, specifically young black men in schools, but I do want to say that Jesse has missed, as of tomorrow, it'll be 3.5 days of school. That's 3.5 days of learning that he's missed. That results in missed opportunities, missed educational opportunities, and for him to fall behind in his classes. As we've heard today and we've heard on the news, he's a 3.0 student. Though that doesn't matter when it comes to this situation, that could be missed college opportunities. And that's what our teachers are supposed to do, be training up our students and preparing our students for college. What do we say to him when he gets released? Because he will be released, make no mistake about it. But what do we say to him? How do we make up for those days? That's also add compounded trauma for him to currently be incarcerated, away from his family, five days away from his family. He's a youth. He should not be in prison. San Diego Unified School District should not be investing in the school-to-prison pipeline. And that's one of my challenges to you today, is divest from it. Get police officers off of campus. Your job as the board of education and superintendents and teachers and staff is to create learning environments that are safe for our students to flourish and thrive. What I saw happen was not that. It was the exact opposite. And if we want to prepare our students to do well in school, if we want them to be the future X, Y, and Z, you can fill that in as you need, doctor, president, teacher, school board member, we can't have them sitting behind bars. We absolutely cannot. We have to divest from the trauma. I want to challenge you to not participate in the national conversation, not to be an active participant in the school-to-prison pipeline. Too many young black children are funneled into it daily, and we just saw that happen on Friday with Jesse. That has to stop. And it has to stop, starting today, because it already happened last week. Today, this is it. Divest. Thank you.
That concludes non-agenda public comment. I want to thank the people for standing up and giving voice to a serious matter that is of a serious concern. Thank you all for your comments and for taking time to address the board and the superintendent today. We appreciate your input, and please know that your perspectives help us to better serve our students, parents, and the community. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Ready? Begin.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which stands our nation under our individual liberty and justice.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast, and we call the March 1, 2016 regular meeting to order with all board members present, including Sharon Whitehurst Payne. Thank you. If you wish to address the board today and your name is not on the speaker list, printed on the blue paper located at both entrances to the auditorium, and you have not already submitted a request for public testimony, please complete the form and submit it to Cheryl Ward, our Board Action Office. Speakers on agenda items will be called on to speak during the discussion of that agenda item. Once the discussion begins on an item, no additional public speaker requests will be accepted by the board. Per Board Bylaw 1025, public testimony on agenda items is limited to a maximum of 20 minutes per consent and/or action item, allowing for a maximum of 10 minutes per opposing opponents or viewpoints. Public testimony speakers are limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker, depending upon the total number of speaker requests received by the board, and the timer reduced to two or three minutes each. Non-agenda item testimony was heard at 5:00 PM this evening and will also be heard at the end of the evening. I'd like to request a motion to adopt the agenda. Some moved?
Second.
Vote? Moving forward, we have item, item, oh, item E1.
Thank you, President McCrory. This is a public hearing to consider the renewal of the Albert Einstein Academy Charter Middle School, and I'll invite our charter school staff to come up to present this item. It's a public hearing. Open the hearing.
Good evening. Thank you. We have three charter items for you today. Two are public hearings for renewals, and one involves a request to withdraw and come back on a later date. The first one, E1, is for the renewal of the Einstein, Albert Einstein Academy Charter Middle School. It's a school serving grade six, seven, and eight. It's requesting a five-year renewal. It serves about 600 students, and it recently moved to a non-district site. Let me find the tab here. It's located at 45826th Street in the San Diego High Cluster. It's part of a two-school operation. There's an elementary school that also participates in this organization. The Table 1 gives you just an overview of some of the older academic information and enrollment growth. And then going down on the write-up, you can see some language about the academic data, information about the educational program, which is an IB program, and there is Spanish and German language immersion, and a little bit of an overview about the board roster. It is a public hearing. I understand there are speakers here to address you. Staff is conducting its analysis now. It will prepare a more detailed written analysis for your consideration at a later date for action to approve or deny.
We have five speakers, 10 minutes, two minutes each. William Milton, Barb Robinson, David Soretta, Amy Lanners, and Miles Davis.
Durfee.
Durfee. Hey, where is Miles? Thank you. Thank you. I love it. William?
Seeing if you're paying attention. I'm William Milton, President of the Governing Board. I have a request. We were going to speak in a different order than the names we just read, so is that okay?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you for entertaining our change in order here. Good afternoon, Board of Trustees, and especially to our newest member, welcome, as well as Superintendent Martin. I'm David Soretta. I'm the Albert Einstein Academy's Executive Director, and it's my pleasure to be here today to kind of introduce a series of presentations from staff, as well as a parent and a student and our board president. We're all extremely proud of the accomplishments of Einstein Middle School and first and foremost what the team has been able to do for student achievement. I would also, before I cede the rest of my time, I would like to formally thank the charter office for what is now, I think I'm on 10 years of this collaboration and what has been just a very fruitful and collegial relationship, mutually supportive and always in the interest of kids. So thank you to Susan Indira as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amy Lanners. I'm sorry, I have never even been to one of these meetings. I was maybe a little unprepared, but I am a parent of a student. That is my student, Max Lanners-Furco. He's an eighth grader this year at Albert Einstein Academy. We have been at Albert Einstein since he was in sixth grade, so this is our third year. We started in middle school, actually. And so I'm here to speak to you as a parent of an AEA student. And generally, overall, my experience as a parent at AEA is pretty much amazing. I chose the school with my son because we were looking for a smaller school, a K through eight specifically, and a smaller school than the one he was attracted to go into. So starting at the very first orientation that I had with Ms. Farren today, this school has welcomed me, and I have to imagine every other parent like me and unlike me, with open arms. During the orientation, I specifically remember Ms. Farren, who's a sixth-grade English teacher at the school, showing me around, and we were on the old campus at that point. There was a lot of open air green. And every student, I am not exaggerating, that happened to be walking past us, just been going to the restroom, you know, whatever, was like, "Hey, Ms. Farren, hey, Ms. Farren." I had never seen anything like it in my life. And she was like, "Hi," and she knew them all by name. You know, I suppose that's normal. But I had never seen anything like that in my life at any public school I've been associated with, and I have been associated with a few. I have a few kids. But so from that moment on, from the time that I was greeted by the principal on that day, it's just been an amazing, supportive, welcoming atmosphere as a parent. And I know not all schools provide that, actually, from my experience. But to elaborate on that a little bit, so I mean, it starts with the support staff for me, frankly. I'm a kind of a parent volunteer. They let me take over a few things, whether they liked it or not, I think I kind of took over a few things. But the support staff, from day one, I started in sixth grade, in the middle of school. Oh, my gosh. I'm sorry. Anyway, between the support staff, they are so supportive, so available. The teachers are so supportive, so available. And the administration, Ms. Robinson, is so supportive of me, of everyone, of the students, of the parents, of whoever wants to get things done. It's absolutely ridiculous. I know this was the right choice for my son, and I couldn't be happier how it's turned out. So anyway, I'm sorry. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. You're very enthusiastic. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Max, and I'm an eighth grader at Albert Einstein Academy. I've been at Albert Einstein Academy since sixth grade, and what I like about my school is the teachers. They're all very energetic in class and enthusiastic, and it really seems like they love what they're doing. They know what they're doing, and they love it, everything that they teach. And they're very caring towards the students. Say a student has a problem that they need help on, they will sit down with them individually and just help them until they understand what they have to do. And I also love the students because everyone's so friendly and everyone's so helpful, and you can just talk to anyone, and they'll always talk and listen to you for whatever you need. And I'm glad that I came to this school because I think I probably couldn't have gotten a better middle school experience than this one.
Yep.
I want to echo David's sentiments and thank the board and the superintendent for allowing Albert Einstein the opportunity to present our renewal petition to you. My name is Barb Robinson. I am very proud to be entering in my third year as principal of Albert Einstein. It's an amazing organization, and again, we respectfully submit the renewal petition. Tonight, I wanted to present some additional data that wasn't available to us when we presented the petition and wanted for that to be my contribution to this evening's information. CCSA, which you are all aware of, has been working hard to support charters with updated ranking information. So we recently received some data from them that is just really evidence that our program is working and doing great things for kids. In 2013, Albert Einstein would receive an 8 out of 10 in our all-school ranking. So, and you all know what that means, our similar school ranking would be a 6 out of 10 in 2013. We're very proud to announce, based on this new data that we just received from CCSA, that we held strong to our 8 out of 10 in our all-school ranking. But most exciting in this new data is that we moved to a 10 out of 10 in our similar school ranking. And yeah, that's a wow. It is. What's particularly exciting about that data is it represents a new client. We've grown, and sped, has grown from 6 to 10%. ELL has grown up to 16%. So not only have we just done amazing things in the form of achievement for kids on our watch, that watch has changed, and we're very excited about that, and we're excited to continue on that program, and we just are very grateful for you to consider to continue to give us the opportunity to share, to serve our shared children. So I just want to thank you for the opportunity. Good night.
Thank you, Barb. Last speaker, Miles Durfee.
As I mentioned earlier, I'm William Milton, President of the Governing Board, and I just want to say I'm an educator myself, retired educator, and so I can honestly say that to work with this staff and to be involved with this organization is the most rewarding thing. You heard that student make the comment about the energy and the enthusiasm. That's what I see all the time. I mean, people are so committed, the staff, the students, all the stakeholders. It's a real rewarding feeling, and I know I speak for the board when I say that. To be a part of guiding and going forward in our directions and helping to fulfill educational goals, that's important and it's meaningful work. And I think from the testimonies you heard from the different people, good things are happening at Albert Einstein Academy. So I would encourage you to approve the renewal. Thank you.
I'm Miles Davis, and from the California Charter Schools Association. I'm going to play a little song for you.
It's your opportunity to toot your horn here.
So I'm Miles Durfee, and I'm with the California Charter Schools Association. I wanted to speak in support of Albert Einstein Middle tonight. I see this as a great opportunity to do what charter schools get to do every five years, which is celebrate their successes and really reflect and renew their commitment to the education that they're already impacting in San Diego. And Albert Einstein Middle School is a fine example of a school that gets to do that. So I look forward to the vote next month and hope that we will see another unanimous vote from this board. unanimous vote from this Board to renew a great charter school. So, thank you.
Board questions, comments? Yes, trustee.
Well, I'd just like to congratulate Albert Einstein Middle School on your success over the last five years. I think it's going to be a pretty straightforward decision for us when the staff comes back with the recommendation on the renewal. And I'd particularly like to congratulate Albert Einstein on your push to create, you began as a dual-immersion German program, and there's a lot of support and excitement around that program, and you've expanded that now to a dual-immersion Spanish program, and that's been very exciting as well, and I think it's helped to increase the diversity that we just heard about tonight. So, I'd definitely encourage you to continue in that direction, and again, congratulate you for your success.
Thank you.
Yes, just one comment, and maybe David can comment on this. I noticed that the current enrollment is 585, and when I turn the next page, the enrollment for 1617 all the way up to 2021 is across the board, straight at 600. And the only reason I'm asking is because usually we see projections of going up and up and up, and I'd just like you to comment on that for us.
Yes, good question. That's the capacity of the building that Ms. Parks referred to on 458 26th Street, 600. So, unless they're on the roof, there's no more room.
Yeah, and I did notice that one of the parents said that the size of the school was a big plus for her.
Yeah.
Being a smaller school.
Correct.
Other comments? Yes. Trustee, Whitehurst Payne.
Good evening to everybody. You know, you can read the report and go through all of that, but to hear the enthusiasm of your speakers, the question comes to my mind, what's different about your charter than other schools? And I think I heard some of it tonight. I mean, what is different? And I had a dialogue with your chair there, and basically, that's the key piece that I'm interested in, why can't we replicate that throughout the city, for public schools, charter schools, wherever? That enthusiasm that you talked about, that excitement, I'd like to see that replicated.
Any other speakers want to comment?
Thank you for that question. I think that's an amazing question, and I think it's one of the things that's very unique about our program, there's an infectious enthusiasm when you walk on our campus, that starts with our teachers, starts with our staff. And I think that comes from a leadership team that really looks at that as a priority. We develop a very strategic professional development plan that is rooted in serving our teachers, and how do we meet their needs, because happy teachers equal happy kids, and great things happen for kids when our teachers feel like they're successful and they're supported. We hear that word a lot, teacher support, we dig into that, what does that mean? We try to unpack that. And I have to say, it is the teachers and the staff, and they're amazing, that 10 is their 10. And it represents that great things can happen for kids when you circle together as a staff and have a common goal, and work to make that common goal happen.
And just one question to follow up, if you had staff from other district schools come to visit your school to see what you're doing?
Yes, sir, we absolutely do. And Allison Kendra from CCSA and I are, we worked together at a previous school, so she actually has invited some folks for different tours, and some different things have happened since the scores have come out, so that's been an exciting opportunity for us.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Trustee.
I know this is an information item, and that we're supposed to wait a month, but do we have to? Can I move that we renew the petition?
Generally, for the staff, we would need to make some academic operational findings that they have met for renewal, and so I don't believe we're prohibited from doing that, we just want to make sure there would be no technical prohibition on the validity of that renewal.
All right, understood, thank you. I tried.
Yeah, I want to thank Einstein, I visited both campuses, and was, the enthusiasm that is shared here at the meeting is pervasive throughout the school, and incredible, incredible campus, incredible mission, and you're implementing that. Had a few questions, your assurances on page two, you just said that you would comply with No Child Left Behind, and so we know that we have left No Child Left Behind, and hopefully we'll comply and with every student succeeds, which is the new replacement. And then, in February, you were going to do a staff review of annual progress of student achievement, and I'm wondering if we maybe could hear a little bit more about that, not now, but maybe next time. And then, I noticed that, I was curious about your suspensions and expulsions, maybe if the next time you can let us know how successful you are with all your students and all your groups. And I know we're making a significant reduction in our district suspensions and expulsions, and I'm assuming we're making the same headway throughout our district with our restorative You have an item here that all students have access to all courses, and so I want to know a little bit more about that, in addition to your world language of German, which is You have an item that shows a big jump in professional development, you budgeted for five, and I think you're planning to spend $35,000, you plan to spend $35,000, I'm not sure what happened in the meantime, to show a significant increase. But also, another five times increase on parent involvement, and I'm curious, in learning more about what you're doing to engage your parents, but excellent, excellent plan, excellent LCAP, I want to come in on that, I just had a few questions, and hopefully can clarify those next time. Any other comments, questions, concern? Moving on. Item E2, and we have public speakers, we have three, does staff have a report?
Yes, thank you. Based on comments and review regarding this item, we did communicate with the school yesterday, and the school is requesting to withdraw the agenda item at this time. It's an expansion for high school grades. Additional information is expected to be received and reviewed, and once that's been analyzed by staff, we anticipate this item will come back. The school has prepared a letter indicating its intent, and we respectfully request our Board to approve to accept the withdrawal at this time.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Vote. Approve staff recommendation to withdraw.
I don't know if the speaker still wanted to address you or not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We have, are there three speakers that still want to address this item, or wait until it pops up again? We had Mike Seal, Edward Abita, and Bennett Hager. So, no speakers, vote goes as voted, and we have unanimous, 5-0, no extensions. Next item, E3.
Good evening. Item E3 is a public hearing to consider the renewal of Epiphany Prep Charter School. Epiphany Prep's initial charter was granted in 2012 for a three-year term, and the school is requesting renewal for a five-year term. The school is located on a non-district site at 6134 Benson Avenue in the Lincoln Cluster, and serves grades K through eight. Included in the write-up is an overview, including a brief summary of some academics that the school has submitted in the renewal petition. The educational program includes an eight-hour school day and an extended school year, also a dual-language Spanish, Spanish-English immersion program. There's some projected enrollment information and some current board roster information. And as with the other public hearing staff, we'll bring forward a recommendation on this renewal petition at a future board meeting. And I believe there are some speakers from Epiphany signed up to speak.
So, we have public comments on this item, we have six, so two minutes each. David Rivera, Jesse Manuel Villarreal, Paul Gutierrez, Dr. Liz Johnson, and Cynthia Rudessindo, and Miles Derfey. So, and are you David?
Good evening, hi, I'm David Rivera, yes.
Thank you.
And thank you for providing Epiphany Prep Charter School with the opportunity to speak tonight. Again, I'm the President of the school. Three years ago, we chose the name Epiphany, because most of our founding team members actually overcame some very challenging environments in their youth. Yet, each of us had our Epiphany moment, where everything kind of came together for us, and everything started to make sense. My Epiphany led me to open another school in 2001 in southeast San Diego, that today sends about 90 percent of its students onto college. Our Board Chair grew up in Harlem, yet she's a retired school district superintendent. Our principal was also the founding principal of a Blue Ribbon School for a similar high-risk population also. Our high-achieving team has created an extended-day model focused on values, utilizing technology and personalized learning to achieve many successes in our two and a half years. Examples of our successes include our inner-city students achieving 27 percent and 24 percent higher growth in reading and math, on NWA map scores compared to the national norm. 74 percent of students enrolled in our first two years gained at least one level increase on CELT, well above the state's requirement of 59 percent. From our first year to our second year, we nearly doubled the number of our reclassified students to fluent English proficient, from 10 percent to 19 percent. Our attendance is between 94 and 95 percent. We have not had a suspension in five months. Through our high school transition program, 100 percent of our eighth-grade graduates last year were able to go to the high school, the number-one choice of high schools, after visiting and researching a lot of high schools, and we've also maintained a 5 percent cash reserve each year as well. Thank you. And next to speak is our principal.
Thank you. Thank you.
Board members, Superintendent Martin, we again thank you for the opportunity to have Epiphany Prep speak tonight. My name is Dr. Jose Manuel Villarreal, as the Epiphany Prep Principal, I'm beaming with excitement and promise. Let me first thank the Charter Schools offices in Park, T.J. Walsh, for their positive support and sharing that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, we truly appreciate your help. One phrase that you will often hear amongst educators is, what does it sound like, feel like, and look like? And Epiphany Prep, what it sounds like is our four pillars, and that would be transformational, innovative, entrepreneurial, and whole child. To be transformational, the student feels that regardless of their personal challenges, they belong. Adults on the campus will put a face to the data and know their story. Each morning, putting on the uniform is more about building a sense of purpose and community. When I put on my tie every day, I carry my field worker's father and mother's story to value a noble profession, being privileged to simply have the opportunity to use our shoulders to uplift those that need uplifting. And innovate, students are nudged, as adults are in the organization, to simply be better in a safe and nurturing environment. Launching them to be entrepreneurial is to ask them to say more, and not to rescue them, but throw them a lifeline. And our final pillar is central to who we are, which is the whole child. We believe that through our work and restorative justice practices and rigorous instructional pedagogy, our students will be reflective and challenged to be empathetic towards the community they build. An alumni and a staff member will now continue sharing our story, and I'll stand up here because they're very nervous. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Villarreal. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Paula Gutierrez. I attended Epiphany Prep Charter School for two years. One of my favorite memories of Epiphany is that at Epiphany, the teachers always focused on students, academic and personal life. At Epiphany, I never felt alone or scared. I knew that while on campus, I was under the watchful eyes of caring educators, whose number-one priority was me and my students, pardon my students, yeah. When I came to Epiphany, all of my teachers took the time to explain the learning material until everyone understood. Every one of my instructors took the time to work with the scholars one-on-one. Thanks to Epiphany, I am more confident, honest, and a better student. Today, I attend E3 Civic High, which was my first school that I really wanted to attend. And I know that I will make, and I will be able to graduate from high school because of all that I have learned while I was a student at Epiphany Prep. You need to keep Epiphany. Students need to be given the opportunity to attend a school that cares. Epiphany brings scholars, parents, and teachers together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, we have three more speakers.
Good afternoon, Board members. We want to thank you for providing Epiphany Prep Charter School with an opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Cynthia Rudessindo. I'm here to tell you my story. As a parent, a community member at Epiphany Prep, I'm excited to be a part of a school that teaches all the children how important our community is. The adults at Epiphany Prep have confidence that students will learn in different ways, understand math, science, art, and English. I know David Rivera as a person, as a community leader. David and Jose Villarreal are committed to educate, who are always willing to listen to parents like me. I speak a lot of parents, and when David told me about this school, I was excited about their mission. I would like Jose Manuel Villarreal to do in a world school, he's doing really good at the school. Our community, Epiphany is a school that encourages parents like myself to get involved in children's education. Please renew Epiphany and allow our students to continue on a path to success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board members, and Superintendent Martin, I am Dr. Elizabeth Johnson. I appreciate this opportunity to speak in support of Epiphany Prep Charter School. I served in Santee School District as a superintendent, and I've been an educator for about 42 years. My role since Epiphany Prep first opened in 2013 has been as an advisor, I helped to write the charter petition, and I've been an advisor to the president, to the school Board, and now I'm serving as Board Chair. They kind of continued to rope me in. Because I've been a superintendent, one of the things that has been really important is to help this charter dot the i's and cross the t's, so sometimes I'm also a watchdog as well. After I retired as superintendent, I wanted to give back to the community. I was one of these children who may not have made it. I grew up in Harlem, New York City, I came from a poor family, and was adopted. My mother and father had an elementary and middle school education, yet I accomplished the American dream because of a lot of people's belief and support in me. So, I see myself in these children, and I'm at the school in classrooms because I care that these students will go on to college. That's why I hope you will glean that we are a sound organization and very committed to helping children that sometimes are not as supported, and we're totally interested in serving children who need the educational program we are recommending in this petition, and we hope you will strongly consider keeping Epiphany Prep. Thank you.
Jess.
Good evening again, Miles Derfey, again from the Charter Schools Association. I'm also, it's a great pleasure to be able to speak in support of Epiphany Prep tonight. One of the most exciting things that I get to do is see different models in action, and looking at the diversity of different schools and different ways that they approach the way to educate students. Epiphany Prep, a newer school, newer charter school in the system, and their ability to find a program that parents love and choose, and to educate them differently than what you would see at an Albert Einstein school. So, to me, that's a good symbol of what we see in our charter school systems, that parents can find a choice, the right choice for their students, to give them the best opportunity for success, and that's why I'm supporting Epiphany Prep tonight.
Board comment, questions?
I just have a question, I mean, we certainly are not big fans of basing things on Star Days test scores, and I know in the last few years, we haven't had those available, and then in this particular case, Epiphany was only given a three-year charter, so I would just like to know from the staff, how will you evaluate the academic achievements and progress of this school? and progress of this school?
So we will be pulling the data and doing a more comprehensive review of what's included in the charter petition, including the CASP data and the CELT data, and also their historical MAPS data, the measures of academic progress. So we'll be taking a comprehensive look at all of those. We'll also do some comparison data with some surrounding schools, neighborhood schools. I know that Epiphany within their charter has looked at comparison data nationwide, so we'll be taking a closer look at what they've included on that.
So you'll be able to have comparable data, I mean, the same measures between some of the district schools and the charter school?
We'll try and get as much comparable measuring oranges against oranges data as we can. It is a little difficult with them not having the state data that has been used in the past, but we will be pulling other sources of data to try and compare those academics.
Good. I actually think it's a better way.
Comments?
I have a question. You have this bubble going through, all your grade levels are 27, and then you have this second grade going on, the third grade is 54. I was wondering, what happened to this little unique bubble you got popping through?
When we first started, we had two kindergarten classrooms start, and so they're just going up the chain, the chain through the grade levels with that bubble, as you describe it.
Thank you. And then, what an incredible challenge you have. I have a note here, and I was trying to find the factual reference, but am I correct that you've doubled your reclassification?
Yes, and so we went from 10 percent to 19 percent from our first year to our second year.
Congratulations. Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments, questions?
So that completes item three. It is time for, we'll move it on, we'll take a brief recess and reconvene in the Emergency Operations Center to complete the agenda. At that time, we'll bring up item F1, which is cultural proficiencies, and then conclude with public comment. This meeting stands adjourned for five minutes, and so we'll reconvene at, if I see that right, 6:20, 6:26?
How many seconds?
Whenever a mile blows its heart.